I need to write it down because I bring the form sheet.
Did I introduce what our... My second meeting today, I'll stop you on it, it's so embarrassing.
All right, cool. Yeah, I have to like literally at this point, I don't know when it is.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of June 13th, 2022, to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 7th, 2022, according to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. May I have a roll call, please?
Council President Zambrano?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
Councilman Potter?
Here.
Councilman Revulinski?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. So our Borough Attorney Vignola will be absent this evening, so I'd like to thank Attorney Kathleen Garvey for standing in for the regular portion of the meeting, and Attorney Iacocca for overseeing the public hearing portion of the meeting regarding Ordinance 221511, which is updates to the Ford Avenue redevelopment plan. So first, if you will join me in a moment of silence as we to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of minutes from May 23rd, 2022. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Revulinski, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I abstain. I was not here at the last meeting.
Okay. All right, so one, and no opposed, all in favor, one abstention. All right, so now to thank you for joining us, we're going to get to the one of the public hearings first. This is the public hearing for Ordinance 221511, and since introduction, full copies of Ordinance 221511 are presently posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, and are available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
221511 is an ordinance of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, mending the redevelopment plan known as the Milltown-Ford Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
Thank you. Attorney Iacocca, do you have any comments for the record before we open the public hearing?
I have no comments there.
Thank you. Mr. Berry, do you have any comments for the record?
Just briefly, Mayor and Council, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to state for the record that the Planning Board had an opportunity to review the redevelopment plan at its meeting on the first, I believe it was, and there were some good comments, there were some recommendations made that were transmitted to the Council in the form of resolution related to energy efficiency for buildings, review of the application by various Borough departments, and the possibility of not having natural gas hookups in a new development. All excellent ideas and things that I think at this point are appropriately deferred to the time of site plan review and future review of the application. As everyone's well aware, there's some pending deadlines that may not be met if any further changes are made to the plan and a reintroduction would be required. So I think what we have is a plan that's consistent with the four-party agreement that is really the driving force behind this to change some of the parameters of the development and the area to be acquired, potentially. So I think moving forward, I'd recommend that the Mayor and Council act on the version you have before you, and knowing that the issues that were raised by the Planning Board are certainly important and will be considered in review to the time of site plan application.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for Ordinance 221511?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Revulinski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing on Ordinance 221511 is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on Ordinance 22-1511. If you'd like to speak, you can come up to the podium and say your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Michael Shakarjan, 19 Yarnell Avenue, Environmental Commission. I just want to emphasize what Mr. Berry said with regard to energy efficiency and such. We had a discussion during the Planning Board meeting about that, and there's at least a couple of us that raised that issue. We think, and I should add as well, that during the last couple of Environmental Commission meetings, we were having discussions with regard to gas hookups and our interest in potentially limiting those gas hookups to those that are already existing. And Councilman Revulinski can, I'm sure, can vouch for our discussions that we had the last couple of meetings. So, yeah, I just think that that's something that we should be considering for this redevelopment, either now or with decision points later on in the future, but we think that having something that's closer to, close to a LEED certification, maybe not officially LEED certification, as Mr. Berry had indicated during the Planning Board, but something similar to that, maybe LEED Silver, and then the idea of other energy efficient methods and such, including maybe heat pumps instead of electric, instead of gas heating. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Randy Ruth, 88 Clay Street. I have kind of a general list that I'll just run through with general comments. So the general redevelopment objectives are to encourage a mixed use of development. Mixed use is not defined by the redevelopment plan. However, mid-rise housing is defined as it is related to massing and scale. I believe that mixed use should be better defined by the redevelopment authority. Proposed land uses address a mix of uses by the creation of separate parcels for the mix of uses. The following are listed: mid-rise housing, commercial and business, community services, club and facility leasing offices, and open space. This list implies that each use will be in its own area and not integrated as an actual mixed-use building. In other words, the idea of having businesses on the first floor with residential above is not addressed. The list also does not address the public purposes which create value for the public other than open space. Open space is only as good for the public if it too is designed and integrated in a mixed-use plan. While multiple uses may be permitted on the same lot or in the same structure, subject to the redevelopment authority, the lack of explicitly addressing the mixed-use structure outright and relegating such to be an exception rather than a rule fundamentally conflicts with the intent of developing the site as a mixed-use development which integrates with the surrounding Main Street corridor. There's mention of the club and leasing facilities being permitted for the residents only and not intended for public use. Next section would be for, to create renewed value in the land and entities operating on the land for public and private purposes. As mentioned before, public space is only as good and possesses value if well-planned and maintained. The redevelopment offers an opportunity to create a real sense of cultural center for Milltown. Such public amenities should be more explicitly outlined and defined. The permitted facilities outlined for club and leasing facilities are not for public use. Another important fact is that the impervious coverage is limited to or maximized at 90% of the area, while buildings are limited to 50%. If developed outright to this maximum, it is fair to reason that 40% of the area would be a parking lot, since there is no mention of a public plaza or otherwise impervious public area. Number three, improve the borough's Main Street image by replacing the vacant and poorly-maintained building and site amenities with new carefully-designed, appropriately-located, and oriented residential, commercial, and public space. As outlined there, there is mention of a design criteria for first-floor building facades which would allow for metal to be considered a durable building material, which it wasn't previously, and could be no less than 75% of the facade. The proposed change in the architectural materials creates a potential for less durable materials to be used, which undoubtedly would be pursued due to cost. The goal of any developer is to build as cheaply as possible while still being compliant with the appropriate laws and regulations. By moving forward with the proposed changes, it would be fair to reason that a metal-clad building in lieu of a masonry structure could be built and which detracts from the aesthetic potential for neighboring residents and overall compatibility with neighborhood character, as was specifically outlined in the previous redevelopment plans. Number four, attract appropriately-sized retail and service businesses which will provide more stability for the Main Street business district and integrate well with the existing neighborhood residential use and proposed residential elements. The maximum height of a mixed-use building, which would be allowed but subject to approval by the redevelopment authority, is four stories, whereas solely commercial and business use is capped at two stories and can be pursued outright. I don't believe that a freestanding two-story building lends itself to the idea the site would be truly mixed-use, as this encourages low-rise commercial development in the core of the community. There is mention also, number five, there's also mention of preservation of existing landmark structures. There is reference to the preservation of existing landmark structures, however, since there is no governing mechanism for identifying and regulating landmark structures, this objective does not address the means of preservation, but suggests that an element of the master plan is needed to address landmarks. A historic preservation element of the master plan would accomplish this. Furthermore, landscaping does not address existing old or historic trees currently on Ford Avenue, and the traffic and pedestrian circulation states that sidewalks should be between 10 and 15 feet wide, as measured from the back of the curb, but does not address the minimum right-of-way width, and thus how trees would be accommodated. Other points not explicitly addressed by the plan. The fact is that this area where the redevelopment authority is, and basically bound from Mill Pond to Riva, Main Street, back over to the Lawrence Brook, is an overburdened community. The neighborhood that includes Ford Avenue redevelopment site has recently been designated as an overburdened community by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This is the only neighborhood in Milltown with this designation, and indicates that there are currently significant environmental and social stressors that create an unjust burden on residents. Stressors cited by the NJDEP include impermeable pavement, lack of shade trees, contamination, and air pollution, among many others. This new development has a potential to create a large impact on the surrounding community, and every effort should be made to ensure that this development will not further burden an already overburdened community. Another issue about parking is that parking standards are proposed to be relaxed in the context of the RSIS as relief, but while the reduction in parking spaces may be valid, there is no mention of how mass transit would be integrated into the site to offer alternative modes of transport in lieu of a car. So while a reduction in parking spaces may be desirable, it is fair to assume some people living on the site need to work and go somewhere else by a means other than a car. The other means could be addressed by incorporation of a concept associated with transit-oriented development, or TOD. At the near geographic center of the borough, transit should be addressed in some way to facilitate greener, greater movement in and out and within the borough. There's also mention of electric vehicle charging stations, but that's only as required by the state, and it seems like it's only for private use, so it doesn't benefit the community whatsoever. Utilities, as was stated earlier by other people, the human health and environmental dangers of natural gas are increasingly being understood, and discussion should be had regarding whether natural gas should be allowed in new residential units. Natural gas creates unsafe indoor air quality, and methane leaks from natural gas lines are a major source of greenhouse gas emissions. Banning natural gas hookups in the new development could be considered to improve indoor air quality for tenants and limit environmental impacts to this overburdened community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing for Ordinance 221511.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing for Ordinance 221511 is now closed. May I have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 221511?
Move that this ordinance be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Revulinski, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I have one, and I'd just like to say that we appreciate everyone's comments, and as you know, we all have dreams for Ford Avenue, and what it should be, what it could be, and what we really want to see there. Unfortunately, we're bound by a lot of litigation these days, and it took so long to get here, and with the tight timeframe frames imposed on us by the courts, unfortunately, like amendments to the redevelopment that are outside of the existing four-party agreement are just very difficult to achieve within that timeframe, and we hope to be able to work with the developer and the other interested parties as things proceed to try and achieve some of those other goals. But our fear is and concern is that if we were to change things around too much at this point in the game, that the courts might then retract and take a different avenue which would not be so beneficial to the borough. I'd also like to add that I don't know if anyone else is aware of the plan, and if our attorneys would like to kind of give a brief oversight, but there is some designated parkland area, there's the buildings that are to be coming up, the high-rise buildings or mid-rise buildings, and there is the designated area along Main Street for commercial. So I think it's part of the best that we can do as a council at this time, and with one hand tied behind our back by the courts, and I think it's in everyone's best interest to move forward.
Anyone else? Hearing...
Mr. Berry, and by the way, this will be coming back to the Planning Board, once we have an official site plan?
Oh, absolutely, yes. So this action by the council this evening would put the new amended version of the plan into place, and then at some point, the redeveloper would be required to file a site plan application with all of the many details that'll go into the site design, the building design, and so forth. So there'll be public review of that, as well as a typical site plan review process at the Planning Board.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. If there are no other comments, will the clerk please call, oh, excuse me, yes.
Just, based on my discussion with Mr. Vignola, I had a chance to review the amended redevelopment plan, discuss it with Mr. Vignola, and I would agree with everything that was said here, that given the township's requirements to comply with the court's order by the end of June to comply with the formal housing obligation, it's very important that the township move forward and adopt the amended redevelopment plan so that it can comply with its housing obligations. And so, and with regard to the comments from the Planning Board that are outside of the master consistency review, very important comments that can be addressed at site plan application and so forth, but given the situation, you have the formal housing obligation, you have the four-party agreement, and you have all the parties in sync at this time to get this done, I would agree with Mr. Vignola that the township and the borough should move forward upon this basis.
Thank you for clarifying, appreciate it. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Berry. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Berry. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Have a good night.
All right. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to bills and claims. Will the clerk please read by title only the Bill Resolution 134, 2022?
Resolution 134, 2022 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $3,238,593.83.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move that the bill is be approved as cited.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Council President Zambrano. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and having been reviewed by the Borough Council, will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions, or does any council person want to pull any resolution from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, 140, 145, and 156, and I just have some comments, quick questions on them.
140, 145, and 156?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the borough clerk. You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Revulinski, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any discussion?
Yes, no.
Oh, no, not yet. Not on me. Okay, so, BB, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, and this is to approve resolutions excluding 140, 145, and 156 as they appear on the consent agenda.
Right.
Council President Zambrano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries excluding those three that were pulled. Right, thank you. So now we will move on to the pulled resolutions, the first one being 140, 2022. Will the clerk please read that resolution by title? Resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown authorizing a totally-disabled veteran a tax refund.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Newbauer, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Now, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's a good refresher, but perhaps our BA can answer this for me, just to provide the clarity. When you have a tax refund for a totally or partially-disabled veteran, the bill, or for this evening, the resolution's total around $19,000, and can you explain to the residents how that money isn't actually lost by the borough, but where, how we're replenished by it?
Well, for totally-disabled veteran exemptions, the property becomes exempted, you know, for taxability, and that gets absorbed through the rest of the tax base. So the refund of the monies is a refund. When a totally-disabled veteran makes application, generally it will go back to either the deed date or the beginning of the year, it depends on the timing. So it actually is a refund, so...
But there's no compensation from the federal government or the state?
Not for exemptions, for deductions. There are all deductions that are awarded, that's a state-run program, and the money is refunded to us every year. But exemptions, that's absorbed by the rest of the tax base.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Have any questions, discussions? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass number 140 of 2022.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 145, 2022. Will the clerk please read that resolution by title?
Resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown granting to approve a membership agreement with the Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing Program.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure? You've heard the reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Peretti, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, again, just for the public's reference here, I think this one would be good to just provide some elaboration on and just explain what the resolution entails.
Sure. So the, every municipality in the state of New Jersey is required to follow certain public purchasing laws, so you can either have a QPA appointed, which would increase the amount of our bid threshold, and, or you can use state contracts or other cooperatives. So in this instance, you will see that over time, we do not have a QPA, which is not necessarily a bad thing.
Would you just find QPA for everyone?
I'm sorry, a qualified purchasing agent, thank you, Margaret. So when we don't have one appointed, it is in our best interest to make most of those purchases off of these, either co-op or through state contracts. So this is another one of those co-ops where a lead agency, another municipality, or other governmental entity will go out and basically obtain different contracts with all different types of contractors, and they go through all the expense and to get these contracts in place so that we can be compliant with local public contracting. So depending on whatever we're purchasing, this particular one will enable us to have the ability to purchase police vehicles from another vendor than we normally use under state contract, and especially with the supply chain errors, that's very beneficial to us.
And just to clarify for the residents, there is no annual cost, no recurring cost to be a part of this co-op for the borough?
Correct, there is no cost whatsoever. It's a win-win.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revolinski?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass 145-2022.
Thank you. And next, we will move on to 156-2022. Will the clerk please read that resolution by title?
Resolution granting application for a plenary retail consumption license renewal for Apple Food Service of Milltown, also known as Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill. Their license number is 1212-33004004, and this will be for the 22-23 license term, which begins on July 1.
You've heard the reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, actually, the reason I asked this one to be pulled is because when looking through these, I noticed that there are a few of the usual suspects that were not listed, and I could have pulled any liquor license on here to make the point, so it's nothing against Applebee's, it's just happened to be one of them. And I'm wondering if there are other liquor licenses outstanding, by which time they would need to be approved. These are annual, and if it's not approved, is it a use-it-or-lose-it situation?
No. They, we do and are working on one additional liquor license and two pocket licenses, all owned by the same individual, and they'll appear on your next meeting in June, prior to the July 1 renewal.
All right, thank you very much.
Will the, anyone else have any comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Revolinski?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass 156-2022.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the budget public hearings. This is the public hearing for the 2022 budget. The budget was introduced by Budget Resolution 123A-2022. The introduction summary was published in the Home News Tribune on May 12, 2022, and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption of Resolution 123B-2022. Will be considered this evening. Full copies of the budget have been posted on the Borough website and are available at no cost in the offices of municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for Budget 2022?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing on the budget is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on the budget, it may do so now, you can come up to the podium and say your name and address. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing for the Budget 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman Revolinski, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing for the budget is now closed, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the Budget 2022?
So moved.
Second.
There's a tie.
Second. I have a motion by Council President Zambrana, second by Councilwoman Newbauer. Any further comments?
Just one, I know we can't discuss open contracts, but in my discussions with Councilwoman Potter, he did reassure me that there are some funds set aside here in anticipation for settling those open contracts, and that was the one concern that I had originally, but that was clarified, so for the public's reference, it's good to know that, you know, we do have some funds in there for that in anticipation.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to compliment our business administrator on doing a great job with our previous meeting presentation about the budget, and I think that's why we've reached a point where there are no questions about it tonight.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? We'll, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revolinski?
Aye.
Motion carries to pass the 2022 budget.
Thank you. Now, I would like to introduce our business administrator, Jeanette Larison. She's going to do a PowerPoint presentation on the capital bond ordinances.
May I first like to turn it over to Council President? So just want to, I just want to say a couple of quick comments, I keep it short so we could get to the presentation. The goal was always, from the committee, and I'd like to thank Councilwoman Peretti, as well as Councilwoman O'Donnell, for their guidance and collaboration, along with Jeanette to put together this presentation. The goal was always to create a document that could be shared with the public, so that they could see exactly what kinds of purchases and what kinds of items needed to be purchased or acquired for the borough. We went through a rigorous, just as we did with the budget, went through a rigorous review of items for, by department, the things that we needed to acquire, and that's what will appear on this presentation. The last thing that I wanted to say, the most important thing to me for this, is again the document, but also to restart some of the things, like milling and paving, to make it an annual thing, an annual event, instead of like kicking it down the road five or six years. So the goal is always to mill and pave every year, to look at the different streets and the different sections of Milltown that need their streets to be kept in nice shape, so that we keep those potholes to a minimum. And for that, I'll turn it over to Jeanette.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, everyone, so as Council President Zambrana had mentioned, we worked very diligently on this plan, and it actually has been a multi-year plan. So I have been with the borough now for a little over three years. We haven't really done any capital infrastructure plans, we've had some water and sewer items that have come up, we have, you know, some grant things that we have done, but we haven't actually done a capital improvement plan since I've gotten here. So when I go through the details of this, you will see that there are a number of things that are included, and it's simply because it's been probably four to five years since any of these things have been addressed. And most of the things that are listed, as you will see by the pictures that I will provide, will be very clear on why it's important at this point in time to address them, kind of like rip the Band-Aid off, and try to bring all of these items, like a little something for all the different infrastructure around town, so that planning for the future, we can then tamp it down and have a more cohesive, like five-year plan to go through. So I think that that will be beneficial, it'll make for good financial planning, and it will also allow for more input from the various committees on what we'd like to see done. So the purpose of capital improvement planning is to provide the borough with the ability to make those planned and consistent decisions for projects and improvements, and that we can build this framework so that it will permit the recommendations that we receive to be scheduled into future funding, figure out how we're going to pay for it, whether it's going to be through borrowing, whether we have cash on hand, or whether we do it through grants. So this will allow us to maximize those improvements, instead of, you know, making those quick decisions to start these discussions now and start to say, well, we want to do, here's a list of all of our wants and needs, prioritize them, and then figure out how we're going to pay for them. Okay, so speaking of how you pay for it, so how will this particular plan for 2022, how's that going to impact our finances? Well, here's a snapshot of three years, I apologize, that this slide is probably an oversized one. The goal with your debt service, so the debt service is the money that we pay for the money we borrow for our projects. The goal is to keep that number as flat as possible, because that's the zero impact on tax dollars. Every year, so you can see, the three years that I've been here, it's 1.3 million, you know, 21,000, 16,000, 18,000, really an insignificant change in that. And there's different types of debt service that we pay, so we have money that's permanently bonded, such as the project across the street, or the substation, and I don't want to talk about the utility, these are just general funding. Green trust loans, and then our bond anticipation notes. So that's the short-term borrowing that we do, that we will either have 10 years to pay off, year over year, or at the end of those 10 years, we can turn it into permanent bonding. And that's a financial decision that will be made in conjunction with our financial advisors. So with the capital projects that are proposed for 2022, you will see that we have departments for roads, we have our ongoing water line, lining and replacement program, we have some costs for DPW, the police department, fire department, IT, borough building improvements, parks and recreation, the pool, and then we have what's called soft costs, and that's the cost of acquisition. So it's either like this cost of design, cost that it's going to be to make these purchases or do these improvements, and then overall the actual acquiring of the funding. So the total that we are proposing is $4.3 million. The good news is that you look in the middle column, and that's other funding sources. So we have money coming from grants for the roads, that's our annual Department of Transportation grants that we normally get, we pick a road or two, and we set that aside. So that will go in conjunction with what we are hoping to do, is an annual milling and paving program that we can partner with the county to get the best prices, to do some of the, you know, just keep the moderate repairs of the roads. We'll leave the grants to our engineers so that they can work to work on that reconstruction of those. Next, we have the water lining, which we had received that $2 million grant, so that's, we're just going to bond about $150,000 for that, and that will be for anything that's not covered by the grant. DPW, those are equipment purchases, which we will get into detail about. The police department, we do have some funding in a grant form of $36,000, that's for their body worn cameras, that they're, the state has done a big push so that all of those can be upgraded, because our cameras right now are, I think, about seven years old, so with the technological improvements that will help us, it's about a little more than half of what the replacement cost will be. Fire department is going to be receiving some funding to purchase another vehicle and some equipment. IT improvements, we have had a very vigorous, over the past three years, improvement over our infrastructure for IT. This will help to solidify that, we've done rewiring, and we've had server replacement. All of these things are for safety, you hear in the news all the time about the cybersecurity breaches and the theft of your files for money, so that's, it's so important to invest in that, so that doesn't happen to the borough. We have some improvements, not only at this borough building, but also at the library that we're looking to do. A lot of park improvements, much needed. We are anticipating, or we have received grants to do some of those with the lighting in the fields. Also, we have $250,000 Bike Path Grant that we haven't yet come up with exactly what we're going to do, but I thought that it would be helpful to present that. The borough pool, we do need to resurface the pool, whether that happens this year or not, we're looking to get some assistance from the county through a grant with that. Still unknown whether we'll receive that, but we're going to include at least half of the cost of that in this year's capital. And then for the utilities, we're looking to buy another pickup truck to facilitate the, replace an existing truck for the electric department. So, again, having these projects that we, you know, we have a plan for, being able to invest in the town's infrastructure provides for an overall improvement in the quality of life of the residents. It's also going to improve the value of your homes, it's going to make the community more desirable, so it's really important to, you know, to invest that money. And then we want to structure the cost of those improvements whenever possible, so that they have zero impact on taxes, right? And so the way that we also do that is that we, every year, we pay off a certain amount of debt service, which I alluded to earlier. So every year, we're paying off about 1.3 million in taxes, in debt service, in money that we owe. So if we can try to structure it every year so that we're below that, you're always going to get ahead, and you're also not going to increase what you're paying out. So the milling and paving for 2022, these are the proposed roads, so we have Ackerman Avenue, Howard Street, Blueberry Drive, a portion of Riva Avenue, a portion of Ford Avenue. I realize that with Ford Avenue, the question becomes, why would we do that if we're anticipating redevelopment over there? Well, two reasons. One, because there's a portion of it that's in bad need of repair, and two, you know, it's been two decades, we're still waiting for that redevelopment. In the meantime, the road is falling apart. So we do a small portion over there, and then every time we do a complete road that has corners, we are required by law to put in special ramps for the handicaps at the corner, so some of those will be done. And then for this year, we have an existing grant to complete the Haggen-Pattain improvements. So that's what's anticipated for the milling and paving. And we, at this point in time, I've been working with our DPW director, and they will, he will be compiling an inventory of all your roads, and so that in future years, we will have a list, we will have it in priority order, and then we could say, well, how much money do we want to invest in milling and paving this year, and that's how the roads can be chosen. So it will make it pretty seamless, and there's no guesswork, and it will facilitate the ability to get that done. The water main lining and replacement, again, those are going to be various sites throughout the borough, we're already working in the Highland Drive area. We received a grant of $750,000 last year, another $2 million this year, which we are in the process of determining what areas would be covered for that. Of course, we'd have to go out to bid. Of course, we'd have to go out to bid for that, so that's still in the works, but at no cost to the residents. Next, we have Parks and Recreation, which we're very excited about our new logo that was developed by our new rec director. So some of those things. So here we have baseball, basketball court resurfacing. So I know it's, you know, especially if you look in the bottom right corner, you can see the grass coming up and all of those. So we're looking, Michelin Park, Gloria Bradford Park, and the two courts at Albert Avenue that we would like to have resurfaced, and so that they, the basketball courts are widely used in town, and we want them to be a safe play area. Next is the tennis court at Pardon Avenue, and again, in badly in need of resurfacing. We run at two programs there a year, plus not to mention the residents that enjoy the courts. So we're hoping that once this goes through, we'll be able to have those done as soon as the fall. The pavilions at Albert Avenue, so everyone, when you go down there and you see that there's no grass on the ground, but it's all on top of the roof, so we'd like to replace those and, you know, make it a more aesthetically pleasing area to picnic at. The pool and the slide, so the pool is in bad need of resurfacing. This is a very expensive endeavor. So we're looking to get the county to maybe assist in the payment of that. Either way, it's going to need to be done if we want to continue to, you know, have a public pool. So this year, we're going to ourselves put in for 50% of the cost. We're making application to the county. If for some reason they are unable to assist us with that, then that'll be a bigger discussion for next year to get the rest of the money to do that. The slide is also going to need to be repainted. That's a, you know, an expensive endeavor, so we did include money for this, and that again, I think will we would do probably in the spring of next year. We did receive a grant for $250,000 for the bikeway path. This is still pending design, where, you know, the improvements that are going to be made, but just know that that money is there. Again, no cost to the residents, but it will be improvements to the recreation areas of the town. Public building improvements, so the library roof is in need of replacement. The library has, the board has agreed to, you know, provide some money to offset the cost of the replacement, so we will work hand in hand with, with them to get this building up to date with that. We have some borough hall improvements that are needed, so we have some problems with our HVAC, so we're going to need to do some improvements both for the heating and cooling side of that. We also, if you notice at the police entrance, that door is always open, there's a problem with the door, it needs to be replaced, so we're looking to do that. We have also been working on getting, obtaining a digital sign for out front, which will be able to provide notifications that can be changed, you know, whoever we charge with that responsibility right from their cell phone, you could put pictures up there, we've been very excited about what we've been able to see, so we'd like to have that replaced. And then, again, that's where the IT improvements come in, what I spoke about with the $15,000 to do some more rewiring and hardware purchases. The vehicles and equipment, so this is a big chunk of what is being asked. So the Public Works Department is in desperate need of a new garbage truck. They have several garbage trucks in the fleet, one right now is, needs, you know, about $100,000 in repairs. They are 18 to 20 years old. You know that the garbage trucks run every single day, five days a week, so it's imperative, if one, if they break down, we're really in a quandary. So it's a very expensive endeavor, but, you know, it's a much needed one. They are also in need of a new lawnmower and other equipment that is needed to make their daily tasks achievable. So the police department is also looking for some equipment. They are in need of a new ID scanner, and they will be doing the body camera upgrades. And then we are setting some money aside because the, one of their, the alcohol tester is outdated throughout the whole state, it's not just Milltown, and so we're waiting for a new model to come out that they can purchase. Again, the fire department is a new vehicle and some equipment that they have requested, and then the utilities would be that pickup truck. And so that really captures, it's, it's a very comprehensive capital plan that we are recommending, that we move forward with. And then what we will be working on from this point forward is to come up with our five-year plan for future, future capital infrastructure investments, and we will be structuring that in a way so that we will know that it will be a zero impact on the tax rate, so you will be able to offer those improvements to the residents without, you know, costing any more money. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, if anyone has.
You're looking at Ms. Revolinsky first. I'll go first. I'm in. Jump in, Councilman Revolinsky's got a couple of questions. I, first off, I appreciate all this. This has been fantastic, and I appreciate the Finance Committee and, and working with you, Jeanette, to put this together. I think, I don't think we've had this in the past, and it's something that I think is a very valuable thing, but I think the more information that we get, the more questions that come up, so great presentation, I've got a lot. You mentioned maintaining about the 1.3 million, or it's, I think it's like 1.315, so. How much does this current add? Does this fall within the difference between what's falling off this year in debt service, and then keeping us at the 1.3?
So, so no, this is a little bit more than what the falloff would be. But you have to keep in mind that we really haven't done anything in about five years. So with that being said, as far as, you know, equipment and things, there's a couple of things that I don't want to bore you with too much of the finance, but when, we won't be borrowing any money that we don't need right now, right? So certain things, like the purchase of the garbage truck, or other vehicles that, as we all know, you can't get these things. So we can place the order, but it might be a year and a half before we get it, and certainly we don't pay for anything until we receive it. So there would be no cost at this point with that. It's also, this would be initially funded through temporary financing. So any money that needed to be borrowed would be on a temporary basis. When you, and that's the bond anticipation note, or a ban. When you borrow under those auspices, payments are not required for three years. So normally, in my experience, I don't like to do that, right? So I like, if I borrow it, I'm going to start paying on it the very next year, even if we're not going to pay it all off, and it will eventually have to be bonded. It doesn't make any, you know, it's like having a credit card and making the minimum payment, like, you know, so you don't want to do that. So I'm always trying to aggressively, so as, as we pay down our bonds, right? And things fall off, so we have older, we have different ages of bonds and different ages of the finances or the debt. As that falls off and it's paid off, then you say, well, I don't have to make, now my debt service payment is this much lower. So we don't do that. We say, oh, it's this much lower, we throw it into paying down aggressively the short-term debt. So to answer your question without boring too, you know, that's, the finances is my life, that's what, that's what I really enjoy. Two, it's not going to be an increase. So this, this, even though we're looking to present a plan that's a little bit more than the debt that's falling off, we're not borrowing money right away, we're not going to have to make that payment right away, so in all honesty, by the time a payment has to be made on this, you'll probably have two years of debt paid off.
And what do you see as far as a debt schedule of falling off, and when we might be able to take more on?
Well, each year, the same amount is going to fall off, right? Because that's what we're going to pay down, 1.3 million, right? So, so next, my recommendation, as, as we come up with our five-year plan, that we're, we're going to structure it in such a way to see where other debt falls off, and what that sweet spot is for the number that we'll be able to effectively spend every year, because that's what you really want to do. You really want to have your milling and paving program every year.
Yes.
You know, you may not go buy a garbage truck every year, you're not going to buy the, you know, pickup trucks every year, but there's going to be small park improvements that you're going to want to do. We're doing the, the roofs at, at the, you know, the pavilions, but if you look at some of the other, the picnic tables, like, we might have to replace some of those. So you want to do a little bit every year, so what we're going to be doing now is coming up with that sweet spot, what that number is, that we can effectively spend every year that, you know, I'll be able to provide you with a schedule that you could see that. But this particular program right now, isn't like the, you're looking for a debt schedule that you would normally get with a bond issuance.
Right, I'd like, next year, debt of $40,000 annually has fallen off, so we can then take on $40,000 annually, and what can we get for that, whether it's a 15 or a 10, and what projects to plan and look forward to based on what's falling off.
Correct, and that, that is exactly where, that's exactly where we're at now. So as I said, you're, you're paying down 1.33 million every year. Let me go back here, because I don't know. So of that, we're about 200, and this year, we're at 286,000 of short-term debt. So every time we pay that off, and I think we have about $2 million in short-term, short-term debt right now. So that's the, the payments we've been making towards that. As I said, with, with this particular program that we're recommending, technically, you don't have to make a payment for three years, but we will, and we'll keep it within the amount that is not going to affect the taxes. We will have a schedule, but I don't have one right now for this. So you can look and see, what are we paying every year? 1.3 million. That's the amount that's coming off of your debt.
So if, once we move forward with this plan, assuming that everything moves forward with this, then next year, we'll say, we're anticipating X amount to fall off, and these are what we're looking at spending to maintain that 1.3. These are the things that you can look for towards.
It, it doesn't exactly work like that. It, you know, we're looking at the dollar amount, so, so we're looking at the payment amount, okay? So I wouldn't say, well, this fell off, so we can, we, we paid off 1.3 million, so we can spend 1.3 million. No, that's not, I wouldn't recommend that at all. This particular plan is so robust because you haven't done anything for a long time, and, and it's really important to, and I will tell you, from everything that I've done here since I've been here, even when I came in, and the computers, and the phones, and the, what, you know, you have to do annual upkeep on whatever it is, whether it's your roads, or your parks, or, you know, so that when you're doing it, it's incremental, so that we're not looking at these large numbers. So I think that it's important that we do this, I think that there's a lot of things that need to be accomplished, that we, we really wanted to do some last year, and it just, as we were going through with our planning, it just didn't happen. And I think that the fact that you haven't done anything in a number of years, as far as the infrastructure is concerned, whether it be roads, or parks, or the pool, or equipment, that, you know.
In part, the reason I ask this is because, for, for myself, sitting up here as a more clear picture moving forward, I'd like to be able to say, okay, we can't get to that this year, but I'm anticipating within the next two years, we'll be able to do these things.
I, I, I will tell you that you will have.
Your explanation is too cloudy to me, and perhaps I'm just not understanding it fully, but it, it doesn't tell me that we're going to be able to fund the other tennis courts, or move the OEM building off that site, or finally do something over with, with the train trestle over here, or, you know, the old DPW building and electric substation. I mean, we've got so many things that are outstanding right now that need work.
Of course.
And I love that we're doing some of it, but it doesn't tell me anything about what we're able to do next.
Right.
The projection. I know, I'm really looking for the projection.
No, you will, you will have that, and, and I don't have that for you right now. That's, that's my answer. I don't have that for you right now, but you will, as we build our five-year capital plan, and we're able to see, you know, where we are, what you'd be able to afford to spend, you know, when you have some of the major debt that's going to fall off, because some of the things you're talking about, you know, are, are much more than, you know, $10,000 or $20,000 or $30,000 for, for basketball courts, or things of that, those are, those are more major improvements, so I agree with you. Yeah, that, that's going to go for a much larger discussion. These are just the, the things that are, you know.
Those are annual maintenance and things that we need to do. We always used to do a bond just for a truck, a bond just for something else. I know, I like how this wraps it all up into.
Yeah, just rip off the mandate, and then this way, now we can know what we need to do to update, and then we can have a, a more robust discussion about some of the larger issues that you're mentioning.
So, but one of the most important things, and correct me if I'm wrong, is if you stick to the plan.
Well, that's the important thing.
I don't think in the past, anyone stuck to the plan. So if you stick to the plan, you'll be successful.
Correct.
If you go crazy, then, then the issues come up.
Correct, yes.
Anyone else have any questions? So Jeanette, I would say thank you. I know that I've been on, since I joined the council five years ago, we've, we've talked about doing a capital plan, and there hadn't been one, it, maybe never, certainly not in my memory. So this is something that, you know, to hear that it's going to keep things even, we can do so many things to impact the residents and, and keep the costs and the rates fixed is, is great. I, I know that when we sat up here and Councilwoman Revolinsky, you'll remember, we used to talk about kicking the can down the road, and I remember we had so many discussions about what to do about the parks, and Albert Avenue, and the, and the basketball court, and we just kept hearing, well, we don't have any money to do it. So this way, we are setting a course to do all of the things that need to be done, maybe not immediately, but over, over time. And, and it's a true collaborative effort, because all of the people that have a committee have worked with their department heads to identify the needs. So I, you know, I thank Councilwoman Newbauer, who worked with DPW to go through and get the inventory, and get the roads, and Councilwoman Peretti, who dealt with the Utilities Committee and identified what water lines needed to be done, and Councilwoman O'Donnell, who worked with the Chairman of the Rec Department to see what was done, as well as Councilwoman Potter did public safety to address the police and, and the fire trucks. So it's, it's various committees and department heads that have been asking for things, and for too long, they have been said, you know, we've told them, sorry, we don't have any money. So this way, we have a plan to get what's needed, and I, I really think that the citizens will notice that we're putting a little shine on things.
I, I hope so.
And nobody would want their garbage not to be picked up.
Well, that is true. That, that might be the most important thing out of all the things presented tonight, but yes, and then we will continue to fine tune it, and to be able to provide more of the financial introspect to, you know, come up with even a, a better plan for the future.
Great.
I look forward to that, because I know, as not having a department head as the Chair of Environmental and Health and Human Services, I mean, one of the things that, one of the groups I have is the Environmental Commission, who is extremely passionate about finally doing something with the Schwendeman property, which has been deteriorating for far too long. In fact, tonight, during my report, I'll just be requesting their council open their ears to, and, and tell me what we need to do to be able to get on there and start doing some things, but I'd love to see this fine tuned to finally get that site open to the public, and instead of being an attractive nuisance, actually be an attractive benefit for the town, so.
Agree. And thank you to the Finance Committee, thank you Council President Zambran, Councilwoman O'Donnell, Councilwoman Peretti, for, for working with the business administrator on this and the budget, so I appreciate your time and effort on this. All right, so then I will read that there will be no pub, uh, public input on introduction of ordinance 221512. The introduction summary will be published in the Home News Tribune on June 16th, 2022, and second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 27th, 2022. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the borough website, on the bulletin board of the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office. and available at no cost in the office of the Municipal Clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
221512 is a bond ordinance providing for various 2022 capital improvements and acquisitions, buying in the Borough of Milltown in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating 1,835,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of 1,723,300 bonds, or notes of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
May I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 221512?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce ordinance 221512.
Thank you. Uh, Jeanette, could you just say, before I read this next ordinance, it's sort of, I had a question about it. Why is this a separate ordinance from the other?
Because it's a different fund that's coming out of the Electric Utility Fund.
Great, thank you. There will be no public input on the introduction of ordinance 221513. The introduction summary will be published in the Home News Tribune on June 16th, 2022. And second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on June 27th, 2022. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board of the Municipal Building, and available at no cost in the office of the Municipal Clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
221513 is a bond ordinance providing for the purchase of a pickup truck for the electric utility of the Borough of Milltown in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating 85,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of 85,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
May I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 221513?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Revulinski, second by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Potter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Revulinski?
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce 221513.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we'll move on to the council reports. We'll start with the Department of Public Safety, Councilwoman Dave Potter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, and I do, well, I had a request to just take a five-minute break after the ordinances, so I, I apologize.
No worries.
So can we just take a, a quick, uh?
Intermission?
Intermission.
I, I, I make a motion.
Second intermission.
Yeah, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, we're just going to take a quick five-minute break.
Aye.
substantial risk to pedestrian and motor vehicle traffic safety. Residents using Washington Avenue and Ryder's Lane expected delays in the area due to gas utility work and they planned to alter their routes. The Milltown Police Department is also currently accepting applications for part-time records clerk secretary, part-time crossing guards, and part-time police dispatchers. Applications are available online at www.milltownnj.org or in person at the Milltown Borough Clerk's Office. Please continue reports of suspicious activity, traffic concerns, and non-emergent type calls to 732-828-1100. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use 911. Residents are reminded to report any concerns and/or complaints by using the official Borough website, all by calling the Milltown Police directly. The Police Department does not monitor and will not react, reply, or respond to comments or complaints posted on any third-party social media sites. The Milltown Police Department congratulates the graduates of 2022 and wishes them all the best and have a safe and happy summer. Chief Brian Cannelli. And, Madam Mayor, I also just wanted to let you know, I know a lot of this stuff is still under investigation, but there were some cars that were broken into around the area. And even though it's still under investigation, Chief Cannelli wanted me to express to all residents to please lock your car doors, do not leave valuables in the open, and also too, don't leave your key fobs in the cars. I know a lot of us don't even think about it. We leave our key fobs in the cars and, you know, that's what's attracting them and they're taking the cars. So just be mindful of that. Madam Mayor, my second report is from the Milltown Fire Department. For the month of May, there were two drills, one meeting, six fire calls, 11 special assignments, four work details totaling 24 incidents. There's no update on membership. As far as training, the drills this month included landscape work on the firehouse to eliminate the weed issue. Members also reviewed and updated run card and mutual aid assignments. Vehicle maintenance: Engine 72 was inspected for a hole in the exhaust pipe. A part was ordered. Equipment maintenance: Breathing air storage tanks will go out for hydro testing. Flow testing and battery charging of SCBA packs will be arranged for June and July along with SCPA bottle hydro testing. A new multi-gas meter was delivered. One is on backorder and several sent out for repair. Regarding buildings and grounds, the weed barrier was laid down and stone was spread in front of the firehouse. The membership paid $1,200 to fix up the front of the firehouse and eliminated the weeds growing in the mulch. And DPW fixed up engine company for Memorial Day services. As far as members, members are always needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday nights at 6:30 or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. Respectfully submitted, Chief Steven Patagula, Chief of the Department. Also, Madam Mayor, as we all know, we attended the Fire Department Memorial Day Service, the Rescue Squad, and the American Legion Military Heroes, and it was really a beautiful day of events.
Very nice.
It was. And then we also had Murray, no, Eagle Scout, future Eagle Scout. Murray had his Eagle Scout project, which we all were there to witness as well, so that was great. One final announcement, believe it or not, it's three weeks ago from today, 4th of July, we're there. So just so everybody knows, all the residents should be receiving these in their mailboxes. We're going to be going door-to-door this year like we did last year. We hope to have them out by the end of the weekend. Just be mindful of our Give Butter donation, which is very easy to do, so if you don't want to, if you don't choose to, you know, put it in the envelope, we do have Give Butter. And also too, if anybody's interested in joining to help out that day, you can always use Volunteers. So if anybody's interested, they can send us an email at milltownfourth@gmail.com or you can contact myself or Russ Einbinder as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The flyer, we all got them tonight. They look great. Thank you. Very excited. Three weeks and counting. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Utilities, Councilman James Gray.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to start with a short report from the Human Relations Committee. The HRC met on Tuesday, June 7th. At the meeting, we discussed the upcoming annual chalk event, which will be at next Saturday, June 25th, at Borough Hall. If you remember, last year was a pride in Milltown, was titled Make Art Not Hate Chalk Event. It's on the sidewalk right outside Borough Hall. Really fun day, and that is at noon on Saturday, June 25th. Looking forward to seeing everyone there. And now moving on to some department reports. First, from the Electric Department. Substation was checked daily. Vegetation was chemically treated, and the transformer containment pumps were checked. The operation of the transformer cooling fans were also checked for the upcoming hot weather. A large tree limb fell onto a house on Highland Drive and was hung up on the roof in electric service drop. Department members responded after hours to hoist the branch off the wiring and prevent damage until it could be safely removed in daylight. The department returned in the morning and got the branch down with no damage to wiring or dwelling. Several branches were noticed in the overhead wiring during an overhead patrol, and those branches were then removed. Two trees were taken down on South Durst with the help of the Public Works Department. Line clearance was performed between Highland Drive and Courtney Street. As most residents know, this is a difficult area to maintain as the poles and wires are located in the backyards of those homes and not accessible to trucks. We scheduled temporary outages so that the brush vines and tree branches could be safely removed. Department members set a new pole on Cleveland Avenue to replace an old pole with rod at grade level. The transfer of wires will be scheduled in the upcoming weeks. The department contacted Verizon to set a new pole on Via Terrace so some infrastructure improvements can be accomplished. Verizon has now staked out the new pole, and it should be set in the very near future. This will give us ample pole space to set a new transformer and increase capacity. Two new homes are being built on Miller's Lane, and the department is planning infrastructure improvements on the circuit to accommodate the additional load. We'll be adding a transformer and possibly a new pole. Services were removed from two vacant properties on Ryder's Lane as requested by the owner. A blown cutout caused an outage on Clayton Court. Utilities responded once again after hours and replaced the cutout and lighting arrested to restore power. The Electric Utility Department assisted the Water Department in making emergency repairs to the Riva Ave lift station on Memorial Day. The wet well level system failed, causing the pumps to shut down, and a temporary air pump for the bubbler system was installed to get the station up and running before any possible sewage discharge occurred. Project continued in conjunction with the Billing Department to update the meter-reading handheld units with more accurate touchpads. The department members installed banners for the first day squads made fundraising drive, which was hanging over Main Street. Department members installed our American flags on Main Street, and the flags are provided by the generosity of the Milltown American Legion Joyce Kilmer Post Number 25. And department members also received updated training for blood-borne pathogens. The Utility Department is also requesting all residents to be mindful in removing vegetation that grows in front of meters as it may result in meters being inaccessible and cause estimated bills. But there are other options. Residents can fill out monthly reading cards and submit them to the Billing Department, or residents can take pictures of their electric meter or water meters and send to the following email address: A-H-A-M-M@milltownborough.com. Cards are available at the Billing Office or can be delivered to your mailbox. Onto this Water and Sewer Report. Along with daily work order markouts, pump checks, and emergency markouts, the Water and Sewer Department has the following to report. The department has assisted the contractor of various valves and system operations on the Chestnut and Highland Drive project. Yarnell had a sewer collapse in May, and the department partially opened that collapse and got it flowing until a contractor could be called to replace that section of the main. Hydrant flushing will begin on Monday, June 20th. It will occur during the day and continue until completed. Please check Channel 15 and milltownnj.org for Water and Sewer updates. And I have one final bit, if you indulge me. In addition to my normal council report for the Water and Sewer Department, I wanted to announce some of those upcoming capital projects that Jeanette was alluding to earlier in the presentation. So the Water and Sewer Committee has been meeting frequently, discussed the backlog of projects now best to use that 2022 grant funding awarded to us. After value input from CME, the committee is excited to announce the following four water main lining and replacement projects. First, we will continue with Phase 2 of the Highland Drive and East Lawrence Projects. In addition to this project, we will actually be able to continue into an additional phase and reline Highland Drive from Harrison Avenue to the Elkins Lane Pump Station. Thirdly, we'll be redirecting service lines on North Wilson Avenue to alleviate some discolored water issues in that area. And finally, our fourth project will consist of replacing air bows on the service line pipe that runs from the Elkins Lane Pump Station to North Moats under that 50-foot train track. And I want to extend my deepest thanks to Don Herman, Ralph Janowski, and Mike McCone for their hard work helping to identify areas in need of improvement. Also, I want to thank the fellow committee members, Councilman Potter, especially Council President Zambraun, who has been vital in creating that long-term plan and identifying the projects that are in need of repair. So, thank you. And that concludes my lengthy report.
Great. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilwoman Anna Nubell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of reports, starting with the DPW. Along with all regular sanitation collections and curbside bulk pickups, the DPW has the following to report. Planters around town have been filled and hung in place. In conjunction with the Utility Department, trees have been trimmed at Michelin Park and trees were removed on Durst Drive. The DPW and Utilities Department will be working on the tree list as manpower permits. I just want to mention this is a new tree list. We did complete the tree list last year, but as people have heard, they have applied for more trees, and so this is ongoing, of course. The soccer fields have been painted for the ongoing season. The DPW has painted the pool bathroom floors, removed the pool cover, installed umbrellas around the grounds, uncovered the slide, and performed ground maintenance in preparation for the pool opening. Phew, that was a lot. New safety material was added at the Areola Hopkins Little Park on Herbert Avenue, and the fence has been painted there as well. As for upcoming special collections, Concrete Collection will take place on July 11th through July 15th. Please call the Borough at 732-828-2100, extension 187, to get on the list to have your concrete picked up. Please check Channel 15 and milltownnj.org for further DPW updates. Additionally, for the DPW, the committee, including myself, Councilwoman O'Donnell, Councilwoman Ravelinski, and our DPW Director, Roth Jasenaski, and one of our fellows from CME, Lou Puskanka, I'm sorry, Lou, I know he's not here. We had a DPW committee meeting on Monday, June 6th, in which we discussed our next DOT grant submission, as well as restarting the milling and paving program through the inter-local agreement with the county. The committee decided to apply for two grants through the DOT this year. We have to put a priority one and two, but, you know, you hope to get two. If you get one, you're happy. Mike will go over this further in detail during the Engineers' Report, and there will be a resolution to apply for the grants at the next meeting. As for the interlocal milling and paving agreement, I know that Jeanette covered this a little bit in her report, presentation, sorry, but her and Roth have worked tirelessly with the county to get a few roads paved and milled this year, as, you know, as mentioned during the report, the presentation. The committee also agreed that moving forward, roads that are considered as candidates to be applied for DOT grants or to be milled and repaved through the interlocal agreement should be those that are not predicted to have work done on them moving forward so we can avoid digging up newly paved roads. That's something we hope to stick through in upcoming years. That's for the DPW. The next one is a quick one for the Board of Health. We held our annual rabies clinic back on Tuesday, May 24th, and provided rabies vaccines for 52 pets. There's apparently two more from the previous year, and we were happy that residents from around town and the county could come and have their pets vaccinated. This could not have been done without Catherine Beardsley and our lovely Board of Health members. And the next Board of Health meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 20th, 2022. As for the Milltown Rescue Squad, it's an informal report, but I just wanted to mention that I was down there for Memorial Day, as we all were, and, you know, they had a lovely service. I'm sure everyone noticed, driving by, if you didn't make it to the service, that they were able to plant in their garden bed prior. And even though it's no longer May, please note that you can still make donations to the Rescue Squad either by dropping donations down in person at the building or through their website. And that concludes all of my tiny reports.
Great. Thank you. Next, we will move on to the Department of Recreation, Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you. I'm going to start with our Library Board Report. The next meeting will be tomorrow, Tuesday, June 14th, at 6:30 at the library. One of the items for discussion is the hiring of a new youth librarian, so I look forward to sharing more about that at our next meeting. There are tons of ongoing youth programs, so please check with the library on social media or call to find out more about those. I wanted to highlight just a few of the upcoming programs. June 18th is the kickoff of summer reading, featuring our very own Mayor Mayor doing some reading aloud. That program begins at noon. On June 21st, there's a program that's part of the Adult Summer Reading Program, which is a new facet of the summer reading, and that is called Living in a Mobile World. And June 28th will be the next book club. From our Recreation Department, I'm going to read their report provided. Borough families, please visit the Recreation webpage to sign up for pool badges using Community Pass. The Borough Pool began seasonal opening process on Wednesday, June 1st. Everyone probably saw the water going in, if you happen to be driving past. And each day, there's a few more things out, chairs and whatnot. Definitely making, oop, making progress. It's been sanitized, the surface area cleaned and power washed, and they're looking for a smooth start to the 2020 pool season. The pool will open on Saturday, June 18th, and any additional information can be obtained by visiting the lifeguard Jack there. Also, on Community Pass, there's opportunities for weekday rec programs in the afternoons, 1 to 4 p.m., that include, and I have to say, wish I were a kid these days, mad science, Magic Explorers, and a new youth basketball camp. And additional programming is consistently being added there. Please help us continue to make Milltown Recreation a thriving community in motion. The Recreation Advisory Committee will meet this week on Wednesday, June 15th, here in the Borough Hall, 7 p.m. The Historic Preservation Committee meets on 4th Thursdays, online, on Zoom. We always have robust discussions. Some of the topics from our last meeting included the Milltown Museum Buildings, Main Street and Cottage Ave Firehouse Buildings, the Raritan River Railroad, especially pertaining to ownership of the properties that are adjacent to the water. But one of the big highlights is that we have a page of our own on the Milltown website, thanks to the submission of an official forum by Chair of the Committee, also present here in the audience, Randy Ruth. There's information about a survey and also regarding the website, I had a note here and didn't mention it. Huge kudos to Gabrielle Pietanzo, who's been working on all of these webpages for the commissions, committees, and boards. There's some fantastic work happening there on the website. And if you want to be at our next, part of our next meeting, June 23rd, 6:30, and as I mentioned, via Zoom. And lastly, I wanted to thank the Little League for a kind invitation to really make someone's die. I was able to pull the winner of a $10,000 raffle prize, but it was also so much fun to see all the enthusiastic players of all ages playing to conclude their season with the All-Star Game. And that concludes my report.
That's great. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman Rich Ravelinski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Short and sweet report this night. Like always, Revitalization Committee will meet tomorrow night at 7 p.m. via Zoom. Environmental Commission, this is a big one. I'd like all the council members to just open their ears for a second on this one. The last meeting we had went to, Michael, would you say, probably 10:30, 11 o'clock at night? Lengthy discussion. And while I didn't print out the letter and provide it to you all, the members are very concerned with the status of the Schwendemann property and would really like approval to go in there. I was informed earlier in the year that we weren't allowing anyone to go in anymore because of the status of the building, but they really want to go in, preserve the wood at a minimum, and are looking for council approval. So I had recommended coming forth and doing a quick presentation like some of the Eagle Scouts do, but in lieu of that, I'm wondering if we can get, you know, a consensus here that, yes, we're all okay with it, and we'll leave it up to Jeanette to work out some of the details, if they just detail out what exactly they're going to do, and then work with Ralph and get that approved.
Did that guidance come from Ralph that it shouldn't be open to the public? So I don't know that we can trump the Director of DPW because of public safety concerns, but it's something that you can certainly discuss with him.
I did discuss with Ralph, and he said, look, it's Jeanette's call, and council's got to say it's okay first. So we're going around in circles here, and I think we're going around in circles for probably six or seven years now.
So I would ask then that we do a DPW meeting and see what the status is, and then, because you're on that committee too, Rich, and you can go speak with Ralph. If it's safe, you know, then we can bring it to the council. If it's not safe, we don't want to, you know, have people on there that can get hurt.
I would also ask that if there was a list of things that was looking to be completed.
Right, and that's what I wanted to discuss, was mostly it's going to be treating of the wood, trying to clog up some of those holes, preserve the wood with the sealant, and if there's anything around, the immediate grounds around the building that might, you know, if there's a weed growing through some of the structure, things like that, to quick clean up, but nothing else, nothing inside the building going in and trying to fix drywall or anything of that nature. It's just, let's try and preserve the wood at least. And then we really need to move forward with the plan of what we're going to do with that property, because, you know, it's sitting in the condition it's in, isn't going to do us very well down the road. Michael, I think that about sums up the Environmental Commission report. Green Team, I did have a discussion with Dorian Kerber the other night about this, and we are working to try and get that in conjunction at around the same time, because we have the same members with the Environmental Commission. So that is something that's still to be determined. And lastly, the Environmental Commission meeting was going to be pushed one week this month due to some scheduling conflicts. So I believe that's the last week of June. Other than that, stay healthy and happy.
Thank you. Next, the Department of Finance Administration and Planning, Council President Phil Zambrano.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two short reports. The first one is from our Director of the Senior Center, Deborah Cuddy. In the short time that our new bus driver has been with us, she has driven our seniors to doctor's appointments, shopping for other essential errands, and for lunch. On June 1st, it was a representative from Parker that gave a presentation on memory enhancement. On June 9th, there was a representative from the Gardens in Monroe where a Lunch and Learn event was provided. This coming Wednesday, June 15th, at noon, there will be a representative from Parker giving a presentation on Destress for Success. On Thursday, June 23rd, at noon, there will be a presentation from the visiting physicians on various health issues and services. And June 30th, which I believe is a Thursday, is when Jeanette and I will be visiting the seniors for our next wrap session get-together. As with all other activities and programs, all seniors are welcome to attend the programs, and if anyone needs further information, they can reach out to Debbie Cuddy at the Senior Center at 732-296-0681. The Senior Center is always welcoming new people to try our programs, and a reminder that beginning last week, summer hours went into effect at the Senior Center. So the Senior Center is now open Monday through Thursday from 8 to 4 every day, and on Fridays from 8 to 1. Any Senior Center information can be found on the Milltown website at milltownnj.org and by navigating to the Senior Center pages, respectfully submitted by Debbie Cuddy, Director of the Milltown Senior Center. I wanted to give just a short update on developments about Ford Avenue in addition to the redevelopment plan that was voted on tonight and sort of adopted. This really has to do with the car haulers, the trucks, and just the regular noise on Ford Avenue. And this was put together by our Code Enforcement Officer, Robert Teresi. So I had no idea that he had received so many complaints about kids actually trying to get into that property, either breaking locks or doing anything over the last, you know, year and a half. But he did advise, you know, any complainants that make any sort of contact to contact the police in the future. This past week, Rob did advise Frank Haber, who is a property manager for Mr. Berger's Properties, to post a No Trespassing Sign as an additional measure. Another item that I thought was great to hear was, Rob did say that one of the businesses that was there actually has moved out. That business was Morovie Express. They are a car transportation business. They were told that they could not continue to operate on the site, and as of May 19th, that business moved from the site, no longer has cars or car haulers there. Rob also mentioned that there was another entity by the name of Sands Trucking that also is in the process of having all the trucks and vehicles move out of there. In Rob's estimate, he is hoping to have this actually done by tomorrow. He will continue to follow up and let us know of any further developments. The Ford Avenue meeting, the next Ford Avenue meeting, has been canceled, and I believe I mentioned this in my last update, that when the mayor and I went to Trenton, Mr. Berger was supposed to deliver an appraisal by June 1st. That appraisal was delivered. Our next meeting in July, we'll give any details if we're allowed to. I have really nothing other to add on my finance report, other than to say thank you to Jeanette, again, to Councilman Peretti, Councilwoman O'Donnell, in putting together that capex budget and the overall budget, other than to say that I'm happy that the budget, that the audit is in process, and that with any luck, I don't want to shoot myself, again, like I did last year, it'll be done sometime, I'm going to say September, which would be a great one. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Jeanette, anything further to add?
I actually do. I wanted to just piggyback on what Councilwoman O'Donnell was saying about the website, that we couldn't be more pleased with our webmaster. She's doing a wonderful job. We are in the process of a redesign of the website as well, which we hope will enhance, you know, user experience there, and that she is still in the process of reaching out to the various committees. So if you haven't responded to her yet, you know, please do so that we can get those committees up and running on the website to provide that information.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen Garvey, for being here this evening. Any reports from the attorneys?
On behalf of the borough, I would like to...
Thank you. And our engineer, Mr. McClellan, thank you for your patience. I know you have a few things to report this evening.
No problem, Madam Mayor. We have a few items to go through, and I'll take them one by one. Number one is, this lead application, as indicated earlier, are due by July 1st. There were two roads that were selected, and the way it generally works is you put in two priority roads. The first priority was Northbrook Drive from Riva Avenue to Corny Drive. The second would be Herbert Avenue from Main Street to the northeasterly terminus. The hope would be that you'd be able to receive funds for at least one, and if funds are large this year, they possibly can get two, so that's why we put in two, and that was a recommendation of the committee, and we'll have that submitted and ready to go before the end of the month of June. Second on our list is we've done application and submitted with the assistance of your first business minister, the DEP Stormwater Management Grant for the publicly managed lake water quality improvements for Mill Pond. They were submitted on time, and we're hoping to see some grant funds go to the borough soon. We are preparing budget figures for the water improvements. We'll have that submitted out by the end of the week, which will go to Jeanette and carve a copy to the folks on the committee and your public works director and your water utility supervisor. Chestnut Street and Highland Drive water improvements are completed, with the exception to the final punch-in-sport. Hopefully, residents of the area are experiencing better water pressure and prolonged pressure after demands. And lastly, Hagy Avenue and McTean Avenue work is to commence, although as we indicated in earlier meetings, the pipe manufacturer has been able to provide dates at this point due to difficulty getting reinforcements here for the RCP. We are looking at this problem in multiple towns right now. We're hoping to see the supply store shortage begin to free up. If it doesn't, we can look at alternate piping, but right now, we're trying to stick to what we originally designed. And lastly, we have a report tonight, a presentation regarding the force mean. As you may remember, most of the council are here. We've been asked by the Middlesex County Utility Department... We've been asked by the Middlesex County Utility Authority to assist with the valuation of the borough's existing force main, not only the borough's behalf, also on the county. They felt that this, because of the regional value of this force main, there may make sense to provide some assistance to the borough from the county. As you know, your force main extends from Church Street to New Brunswick and I'm going to ask the head of our water utility department, Mr. Keith Rolland, to make a presentation today with Mike Dubek, who's a project manager at our firm. And we'll go through it. Just in terms of setup, this provided multiple alternatives and we'd like to make a presentation to the council suggested by, to us, by the county relative to get Milltown support on one of the alternatives. They have agreed to, since our budget is still remaining over there, to allow us to go to the next phase of design. So, this original authorization for the county was really just to do a concept report and make different recommendations. Now with the remaining funds, they're allowing the borough, allowing us to go through a more detailed design of what alternatives, hopefully getting the mayor and council support. So, rather than move forward without that, we thought it best to make this presentation, get some guidance from you and then move forward on it. Your force main, as you know, is in, it's over 100 years old. It's 24/7. It never takes a rest. It's on all the time and like us all, it's a little tired and getting older than me actually. So, without further discussion, Keith, and why don't you take it away?
All right. Thank you very much. As Mike had said, we had, in accordance with our authorization, we did a review of some alternatives and analyzed those alternatives for rehabilitation or replacement of the existing Church Street pump station force main. Just a little history on the Church Street pump station. The original pump station, which is located at the end of Church Street, was constructed around 1913. In 2004, we replaced that pump station with the pump station you actually see on the screen there now. There's been some improvements in the station. We've added a fourth pump back in 2011 and that station, it's got a capacity of about 2.65 MGD. This here is a profile of the force main. Now, the force main is the actual pipe that leaves the pump station. It carries the sewage from the pump station, in this case, over to the Mile Run Interceptor that's located over in New Brunswick. So, that pipe is under pressure and that the sewage is actually pumped through that pipe. So, that pipe, it was originally constructed in the early 1900s when the pump station was constructed and it was a 12-inch cast iron pipe and the pressure portion of the pipe is about 9,000 feet long. So, that pipe travels up Main Street, down Milltown Road, and then George's Road into North Brunswick. So, in addition to that pressure section of the pipe, there's actually about another 2,400 feet of gravity pipe. It's a 15-inch pipe where that force main discharges the pressure, you know, out of the pressure pipe and then flows by gravity down into the Mile Run Interceptor that's located at the border of North Brunswick and New Brunswick, George's Road. Now, back in about the 1970s, there was about a 2,400-foot section of that force main just as it leaves the pump station that was actually lined with a fiberglass pipe to try to give it a, to reinforce it and give it a little bit of a slippery, slipperier inside, which will actually help flow and reduce some of the friction. So, that section was leaving the pump station as you go up Main Street and towards Route 1. So, those are the main improvements that have been done to the force main since the original construction in the early 1900s. So, the pipe is old.
The original designer was a guy that applied pots before my time. I was a engineer out of New York and he did a very nice job, but as you can see, it lasted a long time. I was not the designer.
So, this drawing here gives you a little idea of the actual force main. Mike, I guess if you can. Okay. So, the Church Street pump station is located in the bottom, like, left-hand corner. There's a green tag right there. So, it actually flows from the pump station, there's a turnpike sign right next to it to the right, yeah, right there. So, it flows up Main Street into North Brunswick, Milltown Road, and then up George's Road where it discharges into the Mile Run Interceptor right by the border of New Brunswick and North Brunswick. From there, it actually continues to flow by gravity along the Mile Run Interceptor up to the top left-hand corner of the drawing here. Along the way there, New Brunswick's flow is added, North Brunswick's flow is added, and Franklin Township's flow is added to the Mile Run Interceptor. So, basically when it hits that top left-hand corner of the page, that's about Landing Lane up in Franklin Township, it flows across the Rowden River and then flows back down the other side of the Rowden River in the MCUA interceptor. It crosses the Rowden River again, approximately around where Route 1 goes across the Rowden River, and then it travels along the edge of the river. As you can see, it cuts right across pretty much the middle of the page and then goes all the way up the right-hand side there to the MCUA's treatment plant. So, basically it leaves Church Street, all goes all the way across through New Brunswick, North Brunswick, Franklin, and down the other side of the river, and then back to MCUA, which is located over in Cerel, to the treatment plant. So, this gives you basically an idea of where your sewage goes and the path that it actually So, you can go to the next page. So, what we did is we looked at some different alternatives for replacing the force main. If you look on this drawing right here, the Church Street pump station is located in the bottom left-hand corner where you can see the red, yellow, blue, and green lines all start. And then from that location, the existing path of the force main is the green line that travels up the left-hand side of the page and then cuts across to the right and then discharges in the Mile Run Interceptor right at the top of the page, basically under the letter V. So, that's your, the existing path of the force main. That's, it's a little, it's like 11,500 feet, close to 12,000 feet of pipe there. Another alternative that we looked at was actually there's the blue line that leaves the pump station, also travels up Main Street, but basically turns right through the power line easement, right by Harrison. It goes across the power line easement by Silverline and then goes straight up north and goes through Bristol Myers Squibb, their site. This was a proposed alternative. So, there used to be an old rail line that would go along the Squibb site, which is actually Squibb's property now. So, we had looked at an alternative actually locating that force main along that path and traveling through there, and then it would also discharge into the same location it does now, the Mile Run Interceptor, which actually, then it travels through New Brunswick. Those two alternatives basically follow along the same idea that you have now. You actually discharge into New Brunswick systems and you're billed by New Brunswick for your sewage, for conveying that to MCUA. They don't provide any regional assistance as far as, you know, any of the other municipalities maybe, so it's basically just handling your sewage. The third alternative, which is Alternative C, is the orange-yellowish line. It also goes up Main Street and then it turns right again on the utility easement. And this line actually follows that utility easement along Route 1 and goes, and just continues along Route 1 and follows that out all the way to the MCUA interceptor that's located right along the Rowden River.
Not going to New Brunswick.
Not going to New Brunswick.
Good.
This basically puts your sewage basically directly to MCUA. So, you would become a customer of MCUA, direct customer. So, yes, the path is longer. That's a little over 18,000 feet, but that discharges there and then, like I said, travels along in the, you know, undeveloped property along the utility easement. So, you're not in the paved roads. With those two alternatives, Alternative B and C, we looked at the, basically that purple line that travels out of the pump station there to the right. That line actually crosses the Lawrence Brook twice and then travels through the backside of Silverline. We looked at that as another alternative to possibly staying out of Main Street. It actually adds some difficulties by crossing the Lawrence Brook in a couple of locations and then some environmental issues, probably going back through there and then going across Silverline there. So, we were just trying to look at different alternatives, trying to reduce the distances, trying to stay off the paved roads, which would reduce some of the costs. And then as our fourth alternative, we looked at alternative going actually to a connection with MCUA, but going the other direction and going through East Brunswick, and that's the red line that travels across the bottom of the page. That distance was actually a little over 21,000 feet, so it was the longest planned path, but we were just trying to find different alternatives to evaluate these.
And that one goes under the turnpike, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, there were some highway crossings there, crossing the Lawrence Brook, and then getting all the way through East Brunswick. So, basically here, this is just a breakdown of each of the alternatives. I pretty much went through these. This, oh, go back one. So, the green line, like we said, this is the existing path and this was proposed alternative A. And like I said, it follows the green line up Main Street, along the paved road, Milltown Road, and then George's Road back into New Brunswick's system. So, this is some of the advantages and disadvantages. We looked at these in basically two different groupings. Alternatives A and B were in one grouping because they were basically flowing to New Brunswick and didn't offer any other regional assistance, but they go back to, into New Brunswick's system. And then C and D were looked at a different grouping because there was some possible regional assistance and that was becoming a customer of MCUA. So, like I said, alternative A is in the pavement. It's in the road most of the way, so there's some disadvantages to that that are listed here. Alternative B.
Bless you.
Bless you. Is the path that we're talking about that goes up Main Street, across the utility easement, and then up through Bristol Myers Squibb. That property that used to be the rail line that ran through Squibb actually now has their substation located on it. So, that kind of put a little roadblock in our path there. So, either we would have to go into the adjacent properties or find an alternate route around that area. So, but their substation is actually, a newer substation was built in that rail line there. So, and the property belongs to Squibb now. So, that was one of the drawbacks to going on alternative B. So, this path did cut down some of the travel in the paved roads. It was about the same distance as alternative A, but then you have to deal with easements from Squibb and Sieges, which is some of the adjacent properties, and in order to get through there. So, alternative C, this is the path that actually takes you directly to the MCUA interceptor along the river. Besides being in Main Street for that short duration to get to the utility easement by Harrison, you're basically out of the paved roadways. You follow the utility easement that runs from there out to the MCUA interceptor. There's other utilities along that path. South Brunswick has their pipe along there also. So, you're basically following right along that path. We'd have to cross a couple of roadways, Route 18, and the rail tracks coming at a silver line in the back there. So, this was a longer alternative, but it does get you out of the New Brunswick system and it also provides a little assistance to MCUA by getting, see where we talked about the overall regional view before, it would take your flow out of their interceptor for most of that travel and then it puts it in later on in the path instead of putting the flow in up by Landing Lane. So, it actually gives them a little relief in that interceptor and it gets some of the flow out of the Mile Run Interceptor, which, like I said before, carries North Brunswick, New Brunswick, Franklin, and your flow right now. So, so like I said, some of the advantages are keeping out of the paved roadways, mostly undeveloped areas, and so like we said, might be potential for some regional assistance with this. So, and then alternative D, like we said, this was the longest pathway. We looked at an alternative of basically going around the other side. So, this one, yes, there's the turnpike crossing, Lawrence Brook crossing, some other roadway, major roadway crossings, and a lot of this path was actually in paved roadways. So, there was a lot higher cost to this and it's a lot further distance. And so, that was, I guess, some of the pros and cons of this one. But this one also does, you know, take you out of MCUA system, out of the Mile Run Interceptor and puts you directly into MCUA. So, that's basically a breakdown of the four different alternatives that we reviewed. And I think the next slide was just some permitting requirements that may be required. Some of those would have to be looked into further as, you know, a preliminary design, you know, started, but there's, with all of these paths, you know, you're going to have to deal with PSE and G and the DOT and Conrail, and then some possible wetlands and stream permitting with the state. So, and all of them will require TWA permits because of the modifications to the force main and any potential changes in size of it. So, that's basically a review of the alternatives we looked at for the different replacement and rehab options, so.
So, you can see the scope that we had with MCUA was fairly challenging in order to go through and provide several different alternatives. This project may have some support from the county, although I'm not here to guarantee that tonight because of the fact that there may be some regional benefits. As you can see, our sewage goes west and then comes all the way around and winds up in Cerel. It's a big loop, so by cutting off that loop, so to speak, it cuts down some of the distance our waste has to flow. At the same time, it allows additional capacity for their system out there and I think that's the benefits that we've seen. Franklin Township has made a large effort to pull their lines out of this interceptor because it actually started out as a pipeline near a small little brook, but now Mile Run is a very large river. When it floods and when it rains very heavily, the pipeline becomes underwater, so there's a lot of jigs with that too. So, in a lot of ways, that's maybe to your benefit to get out of that line because of that. So, what we wanted to try and give you a rough description of the alternatives and try to get some feedback as to which alternative that you feel comfortable with. And I think that's our reason for making this presentation today.
Thank you. Mike, Keith, thank you very much. Any council have any questions?
Mike, do you have a feel for how this changes our rates as, you know, sewer customers? You said we changed to MCUA. Does that mean billing goes to them or do we still bill through the borough and how does it impact what we as residents, the pay? I understand each, you know, indicated that the project itself had some enormous costs and maybe some underwriting from the county, but what's the end game?
So, it's a good question. The MCUA has a graduated scale of their invoice and the higher the flow, the less you pay per gallon. And Jeanette and I have been working on the numbers from New Brunswick and MCUA because of that. So, there's a question as to what the number's going to be until you actually make the flow there. I don't think you're going to pay any less by going to Rowden, so you may have a slight increase. increase where you're gonna benefit from. It is your long-term cost, I think, will be more stable. I think that's the benefit. Let me also say that what is happening now is, you may have heard of this infrastructure bill, I know we've talked about it before here. There's large amounts of reported potential grant funds that are available to municipalities like yours, although we can't guarantee anything. The MCUA also believes they may be entitled to a large amount of grant funds. So, if these come in, and the way, the avenue to do that is through what's called the I-Bank, which you use the funding to great success with the substation and to other projects. So, the way to begin to get in line, and I think most of the entities, utility authorities all over the state are looking at this, is to start lining up your project to the I-Bank and see what happens. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. I mean, what you're looking for is what's called principal forgiveness. You may remember on your substation when we got the grant there alone, you didn't know for sure, but you actually got a $4 million grant to offset your costs because of the impact of the entire project. So, this also would be looked at. We're not sure whether it's gonna be a borough project, whether the county's gonna take it and make it a regional interceptor because that's a possibility, as Keith was alluding to, that there may be other municipalities that may wanna connect to this, thereby allowing the county maybe to take the lead, although these things are all to be determined, I'm not here to tell you anything definite. And then what would happen is that you would connect to a county facility, not necessarily one of yours, and you could see the construction would be in half of what you'd have built yourself. So, I think that there's a lot of potential here. You are in a good position with regard to this infrastructure monies that are coming down, although I caution every one of our client managers, including, I remind myself, that the way these funds are coming are still being developed, so you're not really sure that you're gonna get anything to significantly make a difference, but that's the report. And there's millions and maybe even more than that in coming to this part of the state. So, as a result, I'd suggest that you really consider one alternative. I think that what the county did was require us to go through all these options and scrub them clean to make sure that we looked at everything, the one red alternative, the last one you looked at was something that we just said, okay, let's save all these other alternatives, where else would we take it? But you see, it winds up being much longer and the cost obviously lower length, and some of our costs go under the turnpike, it's a big cost. You can tell you, we do some of their reviews and it's quite costly on the turnpike. So, that's basically where we're headed.
So, you're asking, you're giving the presentation for the council to vote on next week on choosing the alternative for you to proceed with and at no cost to the borough because we already have the funding in place for the continued design for that, correct?
Yeah, we did not use our all the authorization with the MCUA. We still have money left to the tune of almost ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. And we've said to the county, well, maybe what can happen is to begin to design more of the alternatives in more detail and basically start looking at permit requirements. So as a result, the county said, yes, that's fine, but I think that it's incumbent on Milltown to tell us which alternative they're comfortable with because no sense spending another dollar on anything unless you're sure which way you wanna go. And I think that's sort of why we're here.
Okay.
And Mayor Mayor, I haven't seen the presentation, that was a great presentation, thank you for bringing it together, but the water utility department has meant to go over some of these initial concept designs before and in review and the other committee members can speak if I'm speaking out of turn on their behalf, but I believe it was titled alternative C, the yellow-orange line that runs along Route 1 for visual cues, that that's the plan that we think, again, it's a regional support, goes directly and MCUA gets us out of that New Brunswick interceptor and that is something that the committee was feeling that that was our best option for. So I know to Mrs. McCollum's point, next, if the MCUA wants Milltown's commitment of where they want to spend their money, stressing that, where the county is spending their money to help further the design process, I think it would be incumbent on Milltown for us to pick one and I, right now, the committee has already reviewed and is, at least the three-person committee is leading, is proposing alternative C. But that's not something to be made of vacuum, that's something that the entire council should have an option to weigh in on.
And if not now, when? With all this opportunity, with all the money that is potentially available, potentially.
I got a couple of questions, Mike, if everyone else has done. I love my questions and you guys are probably used to it by now. First, with Ford Avenue potentially coming online and the acceptance or the adoption of the ordinance here, is it worth consideration at all at this time to look at the increased flow from Ford Avenue and what would be accounted for with your design or cursory design, phase two of it? Or is that something to look at later on because we're just gonna be increasing pump sizes or possibly pipe size, pipe diameter?
Yeah, we have been involved in the review of the development applications over the many, many years. Obviously, you know, the root number of units have dropped down. We had made a determination that the gravity section of force main had to be done in conjunction with the Ford Avenue project. Unfortunately, their percentage of cost, the way the fair shares worked out, it begins to diminish, the number of units drops, so does their percentage, so they would have paid some portion of the gravity portions, what Keith alluded to, we have a force main for like nine thousand feet, then it turns into gravity as it gets into George's Road. So they would have paid to have that replaced, a portion of it, but the bulk of the payment would be made by Milltown.
Right, but I mean, at this time, it doesn't matter whether Ford Avenue comes online or not, for design purposes, it's just gonna be a change in pipe diameter, is that correct? I mean, we're not, we wouldn't have to scrap this plan and just go with a re-line of the existing force main if Ford Avenue was limited to a certain number of units.
No, in fact, the problem is right now, and as you know from your experience here and change going, working around the clock a few nights to fix the broken sections, the pipe is breaking and slowly but surely is falling into disrepair because of its age. These lines at the time that were put in, I think the projections were probably fifty years on these old cast iron mains and, you know, you're starting to suffer from, and remember, this line works 24/7, it never stops, and the pumps turn on and turn off with every turn on and then it turn off, there's a surge that goes into piping. So it, and which we've taken into account, the total flow from Ford Avenue's built into the numbers.
Okay. In regards to material construction and service considerations, I remember when we looked at this some time ago, the orange line there, which we titled option C at that point, was also around twelve thousand or fifteen, or I'm sorry, let me back up. Options one and two were around eight million, ten million, option C was around twelve to fifteen million was the anticipated cost at those times. And I'm just wondering now, what sort of service is done on the force main and what additional work would need to be done at the pump station to accommodate a force main of that length, considering we were going nine thousand feet to gravity? Have you guys looked into any of the profiles for alignment C there to determine whether or not we'd have to be replacing the pumps or increasing the capacity of the pump station just to accommodate the extended head and pumping distance?
It's a good question, it's kind of interesting. As you may remember, we believed that this was an alternative the borough was gonna go through eventually, either replace the force main or go another way. Because of the high head conditions that we have pumping from Church Street to the discharge on George's Road, it's interesting how this pipeline, because we're increasing the size, the head loss is similar to what is now. There may be some adjustment to the pumps that are in there, but right now, it looks like we can actually make the change in very little pump modification. That's subject to a detailed design, but right now, it looks like the change, interesting enough, because of the pipe size increase, is gonna work fairly well. Now, if other entities begin to join into the force main, then pressures have to be adjusted when you make a multiple force main, but that would be further on down the line.
And that actually brings me to my next question, when you mentioned the other entities. When we looked at this several years ago, we thought that perhaps the orange line would allow us an opportunity to help provide service for North Brunswick and South Brunswick, essentially making them customers of Milltown in order to convey their flows all the way out to MCUA directly and not have to go through New Brunswick. And that was in anticipation of additional development in those municipalities. Have discussions gone on with North Brunswick and South Brunswick at all in any regards to any additional capacity that they might need and basically jumping on board with us? Or is that more of what you alluded to earlier with the county looking this as a regional opportunity and basically considering that they might take the entire run, if we can get it at least out of our jurisdiction, they'll look to pull South Brunswick and North Brunswick into it, so we might not have to pay the additional cost to run all the way to MCUA? That was a long question, I'm sorry.
I'll answer some of that. So we've been dealing with this for quite a while. As you know, two years ago when I ran for mayor, this has been an issue that I've been very passionate about because we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars repairing the decaying force main. So, it's something that we've been looking at for many years and we're thrilled that we finally have a chance to partner with others and with the MCUA and to get some potential infrastructure money. So we did go and speak to the MCUA and they proposed that it could be a really good regional solution, so it shouldn't be just Milltown, it could be the region. So, North Brunswick and South Brunswick were the partners, so we reached out to both mayors. South Brunswick wasn't very interested, they weren't really interested in extra capacity for a variety of reasons. However, North Brunswick is certainly open to it because as most towns with the, looking at new development, they have that new transit village, so they were willing to entertain it. And as it's gone back to CME, what the next step would be was for MCUA to sort of bring people in. So they would not be customers of Milltown, they would be MCUA customers and therefore with the county trying to regionalize some of their infrastructure, if South Brunswick doesn't wanna join, fine, they may need to someday, it wouldn't necessarily be ours, we would be sharing in it if it were MCUA. So we do have a potential partner, no, again, no, you know, firm, we haven't signed anything or agreed to anything, but we have started the discussions that we're a small town, we can only endure so much, that's why we wanted the MCUA and the county to join us and they gave us the grant to allow CME to start this design phase and now we have more left over. So now it's sort of the ball will be in the MCUA's court, but importantly, and which is a good thing, we had been planning this for a few years now and when the infrastructure money comes in, we'll be almost shovel-ready because we'll have designs and so we won't be like the other people that are like, oh yeah, we have money, let's see what we can spend on. No, this is something that we have been, you know, talking about. It directly affects the rate payers of the water sewer line because when we had all of those, as you recall, all of those sewer line breaks that are not, and for the residents to know, it's not, it doesn't just happen, if it happens in Milltown, we have to fix it. If it happens all the way down to Milltown Road to George's Road, we have to fix it because it's our force main. So sometimes you have to get contractors in, you have to have police around when you fix it, you have to fix the road, so it's just been chip, chip, chipping away at our water sewer budget and rather than keep putting a Band-Aid on a gaping wound, it's something that needs to be done and we certainly hope that the MCUA would wanna partner and it probably would behoove several members of the Central Middlesex County, and Franklin, not to have it loop all the way around. So, the long answer to your question is yes, we've had discussions with.
She said verbal.
Can you replay the last three seconds there? No, I appreciate that, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate you, you know, going into full depth there because I know this has been a lengthy process. I understand that we have the grant monies in place and this was obtained, I believe, back when, Madam Mayor, you were the liaison for the Utility Commission.
Correct.
And in that grant application, correct me if I'm wrong, those monies could only be used if we were to go directly to MCUA, was that correct? I believe that was one of the caveats of the grant.
It gave us the money to continue with the design, so it didn't specify that it had to go to MCUA. It provided for all of the options that might present.
Okay, okay. I thought that was a caveat, that they would only pay for engineering services if we opted to go and then...
Additional.
Additional services, okay, very good. For the record, I like the green, the yellow line, the orange line, so I'm gonna vote yes for the orange line. The costs, we'll see what they come in because with material and construction costs what they are, I'm sure we're probably looking closer to twenty million dollars for that now.
Well, no, that's one of the things we're seeing with this supply chain and we're hoping that these things calm down, but yes, piping prices are up this...
Double.
Mike, what is this due to redundancy that should be in systems like this?
I'm sorry.
What is this due to redundancy that should be in systems like this?
Well, here's what happens with a force main like this. What the concern really is the pumping station, that's where the weakness comes in. So you can tell you're over a hundred years of your force main, yes, you've had breaks, but on a, when you figure out how many days and years of over a hundred years, how much time that pipeline works. Inside your pumping station, you have multiple pumps, that's your redundancy and you have a backup power system there, so you lose power to the generator, so that's where your redundancy comes in. You generally don't build two force mains because of the fact that, A, they're very costly and two, if you're not working or running one, the waste in it gets to build up in terms of septic, and as a result, you don't wanna have an extra pipeline unless you're running both of them at the same time and that becomes even more costly, so that's why you need a pipeline. We have done it in areas where we need different capacities, but generally, there's only one pipeline. And we're looking to use probably something called high-density polyethylene, which is the, one of the newer pipes on the market now. It's proven itself very well, it's just like this, it's resistant to the chemicals and the gases that wastewater is off and the result, that's one of the things that many of our other clients have fallen victim to where these gases eat up actually concrete and steel. It's basically hydroxylized gas which turns into sulfuric acid. So, as a result, this pipe is resistant to that, it's a very strong pipe and it's flexible, which is another benefit of us, folks that do pipe work know, one of the things is it allows you to make small bends in it without a lot of fitting and that cuts down your costs and all those, also future breakage. So, it's a very nice pipe, we use it effectively going under parkways, we put some of this pipeline under all kinds of places these days and it's a nice product.
One more quick question, Mike. I'm happy to hear about the HDPE, big fan of it actually, but for any resident who was curious what it looks like, they're actually installing it in the gas lines on Ryder's Lane, so if you see some black pipe out there with a yellow stripe on it, that's HDPE. But I'm curious, have we considered any pipe bursting and why is or is not that a feasible opportunity for us along Main Street, at least in the paved areas?
I'm glad you asked that because that was one of the things that we did early on and we had a couple of contracts and they said they would not propose, they would not take a job to do it because of all the utilities in it. And remember that you're trying to get from a 12-inch probably to almost a 16 or a 20-inch and really they only wanna go one size, they prefer to go 14. And what happens is when you burst with all the utilities, you begin to affect them, so they refused to even give us a price to do it. So that's, but it's a good question, I'm glad you asked it because sometimes residents ask a question, why don't you try to pipe burst them out? We did look at it, it just will not work.
Thanks.
Anybody else? So, we will, Jamesy...
So, at the next meeting, if, again, for, we want the MCUA wants us, the council, to get a recommendation, I would propose a resolution, we have a resolution for alternative C, that's the recommendation for the Utilities Committee to pursue alternative C and then if we can have a vote discussion on that and if for some reason council wants to obtain another one, we can discuss it, but yeah, I think at the next meeting we'll have a resolution for that.
Sounds good. Good for you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and the discussion.
It's all ahead of time.
Great, all right, so now...
One more? That was brought up during the DVW meeting about the site over here, I believe we got some test results back on any contaminants over where the electric substation in DVW facility was? I thought we were gonna see a resolution or request for...
Probably for next meeting.
Okay, for the next meeting then?
And I can talk about briefly, just in a way of history, it's gotta be thirty, maybe even longer ago, we, the borough had fuel tanks in the Public Works site and they were removed and through natural attenuation, some of the discharges that came out of those old tanks have dissipated. And we require one more report to get to the DEP and you should hopefully be away from that for the end of time. What original direction was that you were gonna have to do a pump and treat system where you pulled the water out and treated it or remove all the soils from in and around the pumping, the Public Works frontage, which now doesn't seem such a bad idea because you're not using that over there, but that was a live site at one time, so you can imagine what that meant at the time. So, we'll talk more about it next week when we're next meeting and when the resolution, but that's precisely what happened. I'll get the dates, I think it's thirty, thirty-five years ago, it's a long time.
It's good news nonetheless.
Yes, it is, very good news. We're very happy that it worked out this one, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now it's on to me, so I know it's getting late, I just would thank everyone for their time and attention here because... for their time and attention here because while it's run long, it shows that, how much we have going on here in the borough. Everyone is, we're working to serve the residents of Milltown. As you, as you can see, there's a lot going on with the capital plan, with engineering, with all of the committees, and then the council liaisons working with those committees. So, you know, it pleases me to hear how much is getting done and how much we're planning to get done. And with that, to again, highlight that we just passed a budget that is only raising the average assessed value home of $163,000 by about $35 and change a year. And to keep going forward by doing things that is going to keep that tax rate flat. A lot of the things that we've addressed in the capital plan are things that we've gotten feedback from the public about, right? So milling and paving, it's way more than five years since that's been done on a regular basis. And I hear from people that have, you know, and while I will tell the people, we're not gonna get to your road maybe next week, we are going to have a plan in place that's going to keep doing this every year so that, you know, they smooth out and you're not gonna have to, you know, lose a tire. And all of this is done knowing that all of these, everything costs a lot more these days. We have, we're spending on, you know, I just had to get new tires and it was super expensive. So we wanna keep doing things and make our town look nice and try not to put much more burden on you folks. And I think everyone's done a great job. Truly collaborative effort with all the council and all of our professionals, so it's much appreciated. And I will save my, the rest of my comments about, I will say, so I'm gonna be at the library, just real quick, I'll do a plug for the library. When I joined the council five years ago, they were asking for a roof. I'm super pleased to see that they're finally gonna be getting a roof. They are having their reading. And I, I'm gonna show that they have new library cards. You don't have to zoom in. A key fob, it's really cool. And I encourage you during the summer, you know, whether you have kids or not, just go over there. They have so many new programs. It's great. And it's great to see that. It's great to drive down Main Street and see the planters looking nice, the flags up, the hanging planters along the bridge. So, you know, I'm glad everyone is working together to get things done that you can see when you drive through town. So it's much appreciated. So with that, I will move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before us this evening?
Just a quick one. Jeanette, maybe you could assist with this one. I know when the year started, we had a whole bunch of equipment that we were selling or cars that we were selling. Any status, any update on the old trucks that are at the DPW facility that we could possibly get?
No, I don't have an update on that, I'm sorry.
No, okay. I'll hold a minute.
Anyone else? All right, so I will close old business and move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before the council this evening? Seeing none, I will close new business and move on to audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. If a member has a specific question they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office during business hours. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Randy Ruth, 88 Clay Street. I think, given the length of time in this Borough Council meeting, there's been a lot of information gained, a lot of highs and lows. And I think a lot of it comes down to planning, whether it's planning appropriately or enough time given planning. And it's really encouraging to see that there's a capital plan. I know it's just one year for now, but as it expands, it's actually really, really awesome to see. The only comment that I have in regard to that is that at the last Borough Planning Meeting, Planning Board Meeting, it came to light that a, to expand the master plan with the historic preservation element, basically there needs to be money allocated for that. And I did not see that in the budget. I didn't hear any plans about it. And I think that it would behoove the borough to put small amounts of money to expand the planning toolkit so that way it can make more important decisions in the future. So I would just ask that that be considered in future budgets, because that's kind of where we are right now. The other item has to do with this overburdened community. So in, that I talked about earlier, which does include at least two of you on council and mayor, you know, so it's our neighborhood. And I think it's, it's something that we don't always see. I think you feel it as it gets hotter. I know today, and it feels like 90 degrees and there's no trees. That's what being in an overburdened community feels like. So I think it's, I encourage you to get out and, I don't know, embrace the negative attributes to feel that overburdenedness because it's, as you walk around the community, you kind of get, you really have to be out of the car, on your feet to feel it. And I think to better understand it for the residents who don't have the time or the ability to be here and sit here for two and a half hours, because there's a lot of them. So that said, thank you.
Thank you. So actually, Randy, before you leave, can you stay there? So the question, you know, that's something that is obviously a new report. So I was going to ask maybe Councilman Revolinski and the Environmental Commission if they could discuss their next meeting, you know, to get a little more in-depth about what the report entails and then, you know, any action or any feedback that we need to provide to the council at large. Is this the?
Well, this, this actually, these are stressors cited by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. So there's different, the reason why it's considered an overburdened community and there's different criteria classes. One of them being essentially, I think the threshold might be 40% low income. So.
Oh, so it's not just the tree scape?
No, no, it's not. But that's one of the, so the way it's structured is that you have these base criteria. Economics plays a role into that. And then there are stressors within the community that affect those people there. So there's different contributing environmental factors. One of them is shade trees.
Okay, okay. So there's multiple committees. So we'll ask all the committees to sort of have a discussion about that.
And I just had a question, because at first, when you first mentioned it, I thought you meant it was just on Ford Avenue, but you're saying a couple of us?
No, no.
So can you explain the extent of what this overburdened committee would be considered?
Yeah, so the current one that was, that was released, I think only like a week ago from the DEP encompasses essentially Main Street, all the way to Riva, down to the Lawrence Brook, and then around Mill Pond. So it's that whole older section of Mill Pond.
So you and my family.
Now, there was in the, and they have like, it's called an Arca story map. So there is a way to kind of look back in time and it looked like, and it's a part of the borough that I'm not really familiar with, but there was another section, I believe, down on South Brook and kind of like where the Beaver Dam is and all that down there. I didn't, I'm not, it's not clear to me whether or not that that area is also currently considered overburdened or not. So that's why I didn't really mention it. But there may be, there may be more.
Okay. So we'll have the committees take a look at it. Great, thank you.
Sweet, I had one. Could you just repeat the very first part that you talked about, about the master plan? I missed a step in there. You said that it was discussed at the Planning Board versus at Strategic Planning?
Oh, yes. So, so I had asked at the most recent Planning Board Meeting, what would it essentially take to fulfill, to pursue a historic preservation element of the master plan? Or for that matter, really, any element of the master plan, not necessarily just to start preservation. So like a traffic circulation plan for that matter. And it came to light that it basically came down to funding being allocated towards the, towards the planner to do that report. So the funding just needs to be allocated.
To John Barry.
But what's interesting is that there's, there are rules and regulations that seem to, seem to suggest that if you don't have the money, or if a municipality doesn't have the money, that that's not really a legitimate excuse to not plan. So.
Yeah, but we just updated the plan a few years ago, right? So it's to additionally?
Yeah, but you can, you don't need, you can update the plan whenever you want.
I know. It's not like we have and don't have one. We do.
Thank you for clarifying. I was a little confused about where the discussion took place. I sort of assumed Strategic Planning at first and I was like, wait, did he just say Planning Board? So thank you for clarifying.
Any other comments? Yes.
Good evening. Lee Weisenberger, 99 JFK Drive. My first question, you got a little distracted here with the sewer line bit. The South Brunswick line that goes through the power lines?
Yes.
How old is that?
Translate pipe, I think, to about 40 years old. One of my partners was there when they put it in.
Okay. I was just curious because if you're looking for a partner, even though they're saying what they're saying, if that's an older pipe, maybe it'll change their minds. But who knows?
Timing's a strange thing, just looking back over time. You know, these large municipalities do tend to have developments that appear that they may not have known about. Interestingly enough, North Brunswick had a belief that they were gonna have a very large development here at 130, and that since has basically disappeared. So sometimes you get ebbs and flows in these numbers. And what we tell all our clients, it never hurts to have just a little extra capacity just in case because to put a pipeline for several miles is very costly.
Sure, agreed. I'm here tonight with some information that may help everybody and I'm seeking information. I contacted the DEP back in 2011, the end of 2011. They sent me a report back 2012, early 2012, on the Milltown Dam. I tried to confirm what they sent me. I dug through a lot of stuff. I'm gonna agree with what they sent me. I have a report and I also have in this thing is the inspection report when the dam was built, 1917, 1918. The owner of the dam, according to this document, is the Michelin Tire Company. You know, there's no doubt about that. In the report, there is a discrepancy on some material that was sent to them, because they reported a deed with one of the Cool Thools. But I believe, if you look at it properly, it's referring to the dam downstream. It's not referring to this dam. So like I said, I would go with this. I'll give this to Mike, he can look at it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so we, this is following up on the discussion we had last meeting where we were talking about dredging the pond which we applied for a grant for. So yeah, if you could give that to Mike and he can do some follow-up.
That's gonna get tied into this a little bit. I also have a deed from 1987. I have two of them concerning the Milltown Bridge.
Trestle?
The trestle? No, the bridge.
The bridge.
Siemens Bridge?
The main bridge.
The one that goes off over Main Street?
Yeah, the Main Street Bridge.
It's called Siemens Bridge.
My interpretation of this, Milltown was sued by the Department of Transportation. This was in preparation, I believe, for replacement of the bridge. And we need an attorney to interpret this because my interpretation is they needed more room for the bridge. They were gonna expand it. So they took a bigger right-of-way. And the right-of-way includes the dam. The way I read this, they took possession of the dam and the bridge. And I don't know how this works, Mike. Like I said, I need somebody to help out on this.
So why, why don't you leave the paperwork?
We're gonna leave it.
Mike and we can have our borough attorney look it over and then we'll have some sort of?
Yeah, we'll make some copies and get them.
Yeah, because it's very interesting because the two people that the state goes after is Milltown and Alsoll. And there's like no answer in this, in this paperwork. So.
Okay, we'll have them look at. Can I recommend that you leave it with the borough clerk so that she can disseminate it that way? Thank you.
All right, we can do that. And another document, like I said, is a deed, 1945. This is the Michelin Realty Company who took over from Michelin after they left, because they kept going with the property, to Alsoll Corporation. There's multiple deeds out there, Rattin River Railroad, other associated companies here. This is showing the property lines that Michelin owned from Meyer Rubber Company going back. And my interpretation of this, the way it's written, they own the property under the water, above the water, and everything associated with it. I'd like to get that confirmed.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that have the, Lee, I'm sorry to interrupt, does that have the trestle on there as well?
The trestle's in there. Because it's, when you go, when you look at this stuff, it refers to five tracks all the time. There's five tracks, like I said. Like I said, looking at a lot of stuff here, there's a, there's two maps that are interesting too to come into play with this. It refers to John R. Ford and Christopher Meyer. Now, they're company execs with the company, but there were four of them that owned all that property. I believe you might have this map in your files somewhere. There's two of them, one in 1881 and 1884, because they're huge maps. You can't print it on a little computer, you know. But it's very.
Do you have the maps there? Do you have the copies there?
I only have a portion of one. But it was fascinating looking at this because I never knew there were two original bridges next to the railroad bridge. They were the first ones. The Main Street Bridge came in 1845 and that's in the documents. So, but I'm not quite sure who owned that bridge. They refer to it as a public bridge, but I think Meyer Rubber owned it first and then down the road, I don't know what happened to it.
1845 is before Milltown's incorporated.
Yeah, well, the original bridge was, the two bridges, 1808 was the first bridge that was built. So that's on the map. So we keep going. Moving very along, I was looking at the tax maps today of Milltown and I was shocked to see that the Mill Pond now is owned by Milltown. And I'm trying to find out what's going on here. I went to the tax assessor today, or to the tax department. I have to meet with the tax assessor now. And I'm just curious if anybody here knows what transpired.
So you're saying in 1945, it was?
No, 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 this is current. This is a current tax map that just came out.
You're asking for one, I mean, do we know when it changed?
Between 1945 and now, something apparently.
I'm saying within the last few years, if that.
When we did the updated tax maps. Mike, was there a lot, do you know if that changed at all? Was that gone off record or?
It wasn't done in a recent modification. It was done, I don't know what the date, it's probably done 20 years ago. I'm not sure what the reason was. I was actually out on leave at that point, so I'm not sure what happened. But it had something to do with the 40.
So you're gonna meet with the tax assessor, right?
You know that, I was out for a week.
So I would say, that's another thing that we'll have to have people investigate, you know.
Yeah, that's true. Like I said, if it was Green Acres funds or something else, I can't, I know the lot behind the rescue squad was taken, like I said, open space or something, one or the other.
The ponds that are state open waters, they have all different types of designings. I'm not sure why it says Milltown or, you know, but, you know, there's, there's a, the way to do this properly is to refer to the borough attorney. Milltown really wants to have him do the research. There's companies that are out there that do these things. And they can, they can go through and tell you who owns what and what the chain of titles we refer to.
Right. I was gonna suggest that tonight, that I think finally we need to do a title search on this whole thing and resolve it once and for all.
If you don't mind sharing your info?
Do we need a resolution in order to proceed with that?
Share it, share it first and then we'll see.
We'll have to see what is.
Right, yeah. We can have a meeting, whatever. But, yeah, let's see. Yeah, because in this process, I've been looking at a lot of different info. And miraculously, when Michelin took over the factory, they actually archived a whole bunch of stuff. over the factory, they actually archived a whole bunch of stuff. And so they had the dates on a lot of things that took place. And I was fascinated by this. And the bridge, the Main Street Bridge, 1929 is when it was replaced with concrete.
That makes sense, yeah.
So that's another little spot. I know when the first tram came across now, too.
Yep. But we gotta figure out what's, what got us to where we are now. We'll try, we'll try and put, you know, take a look and see if there, what's need to be done. But thanks for digging.
Yeah, well, like I said, one thing leads you to another all the time. So, you know, you just keep going. So I think we'll start with this, and then we'll see where we end up. Appreciate it.
Thanks, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to council comments. Does any member of the council have any final comments?
I did, real quick, just failed to mention that, discussed with our council, Mr. Vignolo, in regards to a invasive species ordinance, he has the list. He told me he would get me a copy or a draft version, which I'll share with the Environmental Commission prior to our next Environmental Commission meeting. And then hopefully, it'll be acceptable, and then we can distribute amongst council, and finally check that box off our list. Other than that, I'll save my damn comments for after the meeting. Great work, Lee.
Anyone else? No, if not, happy Flag Day. Oh, congratulations, by the way, to the JK Class of 2022. Tonight was the promotion ceremony. Sorry we couldn't be there, because we were here, but we wish them well. And next week is Spotswood graduation. And to all the other graduates from Milltown, we wish you all the best. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Pire, second by Councilman Freddie. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.